I want to officially call this meeting to order. Will you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Perez, will you please lead us in that category?
Yes, sir. Thank you all for being here. I do have Pastor Mr. Jimenez here with us to lead us in the invocations.
Good evening. If I may ask you to join hands today. If I may have everyone join hands, we're going to pray together as a show of unity. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, together we humbly come before you this evening. We hold hands, Father, showing our unity. Together we've mourned. Together we've cried. Together, Father, we've hurt. But we still stand together as a community. And with our hands together, Father, we acknowledge you as our God. As the one we run to and turn to when we have needs. I thank you, Lord, for bringing us this far. Even though the past couple of days have been difficult. I thank you, Lord, because you still are God. You're still on the throne, and we still worship you. King David wrote in the book of Psalms, "I will bless the Lord at all times." And together, Lord, today, as a faith-based community that we are, we bless your holy name. In the midst of our tears, we pray for comfort. We bless your name, Father, knowing that in you we have a source of comfort. I thank you for allowing us to honor this Espiricueta family here today. Together, Father, as we've mourned, we will also, together, always remember the sacrifice. Always remember, Lord, our hero. He is our hero. Officer Espiricueta, Corporal Espiricueta is our hero. And together, Father, we vow to always remember and honor his memory. Father God, I pray, and I continue to pray for, and we continue to pray for, the family. We continue to ask that you please bring comfort to their lives. Bring peace in their hearts. Your word says that you give the peace that surpasses all understanding. I pray that that peace come to this family. I pray, Lord, also for our police and fire departments, Lord, our first responders. I pray for Chief Dominguez. I pray, Lord, for all the family in blue. I pray that you bring comfort and peace to their lives as well. Lord, I pray that, like your word says in all things, all things work for the good. That through your will and through your power, even in our midst of our sorrow, Lord, I pray that this event that has happened, that has transpired, that I pray that they bring us together as a community. Bring us closer. Let us be united as one. We thank you, Lord, also for the victories. Behind our tears are our smiles. Thank you for allowing us to be acknowledged as an all-American city. We give you the honor and glory for that. I pray that you continue to bless this city, this community. I pray, and I speak blessings over this community, Lord, I speak blessings over the leadership that you have placed in our community. I pray for mayor, and I pray for the city council, I pray for any department head, I pray for every person that in some way, shape, or form is involved in the leadership of this community. And once again, I present our first responders to you and ask them that you protect them, Lord, at all times. I pray that you bless this meeting this evening, that everything that we do, first of all, bring honor and glory to you, but also, Lord, serve to honor our fallen hero. Lord, always we ask, believe me, that you are great and mighty, that you still are God, and we give you the honor and glory, and always we ask, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, I am going to ask everybody that is present here for us to stand, to stand, and I am calling from the offices of the mayor with the council, a moment of silence for Corporal Espiricueta. Can we all stand and have a moment of silence?
Thank you very much.
I would like to call regular meeting agenda item number three, proclamation for Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item three is the proclamation for Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. Before I continue, Mayor, City Council, I just want to recognize Corporal Espiricueta's family. Bobby Espiricueta, his wife, is here with us. Brianna, his daughter, and Joaquin, his son. His mom and dad, Jose and Santitos Gonzalez. Brothers Isaac and Danny Gonzalez. Her mother, Maria Del Carmen De Leon, is here with us. Also, brothers and sisters of Bobby are here with us today, and the extended family. Thank you all for being here with us today. Mayor, City Council, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city mission honors and commemorates the life of Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr., who lost his life in the line of duty on June 20th, 2019, at the age of 44. And whereas Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. was born October 4th, 1974, son of Jose Gonzalez and Santitos Gonzalez, he grew up in McAllen, Texas, and attended McAllen Consolidated Independent School District, and was a 1993 graduate of McAllen High School. Whereas Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. was a beloved husband, father, and public servant for 17 years, five months before his ultimate sacrifice. Whereas Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta leaves behind his wife of 21 years, Roberta Bobby Espiricueta, and two children, Brianna and Joaquin Espiricueta. Whereas after graduating from the Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Police Academy in 2001, he began his law enforcement career with the San Benito Police Department in January of 2002, and served the citizens at San Benito for a period of three years and five months. Whereas in October of 2005, he joined the Mission Police Department and probably served our citizens for 13 years and nine months. In January of '12, of 2018, Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. was promoted to the supervisory rank of patrol corporal. During his tenure with the Mission Police Department, he developed a passion for traffic enforcement. He was able to earn 558 hours of training related to motor vehicle collision investigation, alcohol and drug abuse, DWR enforcement, and accident reconstruction. He also led a team of four officers specializing in commercial motor vehicle enforcement. Whereas a man of courage, strength, generosity, Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. gave uncept to others, and his enthusiasm for living each day to the fullest will not be forgotten. And whereas Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. was beloved by all who were privileged to share his life, and leaves behind memories that will be treasured forever by his family and countless friends. Whereas the city mission hereby extends its sincere condolences to the brief family of Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. Now therefore, we, the City Council, the city mission, do hereby proclaim October the 4th, 2019, as Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. Day in Mission, Texas. Proclaim on this the first day of July of 2019.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to motion, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do I hear any discussion from any of the council members? No discussions, and this a couple of votes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion carries, the proclamation is in order.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can we have the family?
Mayor, do we have to go down at the bottom?
Best, or do you want to do it with the American flag?
Mayor, can we do it down here, please?
Oh, yes. Do it over there. I want the American flag on the picture. Take the picture, and we can go back and do the other ones.
We can move the flags. Mayor.
Don't worry.
We can move here and there. He's giving him the flags.
Yes. That's movement. That's movement. So therefore, we can move down to the right. Okay.
One last. [inaudible]
Now, Commander, set the picture. [inaudible] Now, go to the back. [inaudible] Now, come on to set the picture. 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 [inaudible] Now, I want to call the regular meeting agenda item number four, which is a special presentation to the family of Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Perez.
I guess we do have Nicole from Congressman Quayle's office, if she can, go ahead.
Mayor and the City Council, family of Espiricueta, Corporal Espiricueta. I'm here before Congressman Henry Quayle. I'm representing him today. He regrets not being here, but he did ask that I provide you with this congressional record, which will be presented later on. It reads, Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize the life and service of Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta. Corporal Espiricueta was an 18-year law enforcement veteran, most of which was spent with the City of Mission Police Department. He began his career with the San Benito Police Department, where he received several accolades, including Police Officer of the Year. He then joined the Mission Police Department as a patrol officer before he was promoted to Patrol Corporal. During his career, he was noted for saving two young children who were trapped in a car, and for apprehending multiple armed suspects during a home invasion. He also received a matarious service award after he saved an elderly individual from a burning house. In addition, he was featured on A and E Live PD and National Geographic's Border Wars. Corporal Espiricueta is survived by his high school sweetheart and wife of 21 years, Roberta Bobby De Leon Espiricueta, and their two children, Brianna and Joaquin. It is important to remember that law enforcement officials risk their lives every day for our safety. Corporal Espiricueta's heroic life and career embodies integrity and servitude of a truly influential community leader and law enforcement official. I am grateful for the opportunity to honor the life of this remarkable and exemplary officer. His legacy will live on through the lives of the many people he helped to protect. Madam Speaker, I thank you for your time to recognize Corporal Espiricueta and his heroic service to our community.
I also have a flag that the congressman sent in honor of Officer Espiricueta, Corporal
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I would like to invite our state representative, Bobby Guerra, and Sergio Munoz Jr. to please join me at the podium. The state of Texas has passed a resolution, and I would like to read that today. Whereas Corporal Jose Luis Espidi Espiricueta Jr., a member of the Mission Police Department and an 18-year law enforcement veteran, was killed in the line of duty on June 20th, 2019, bringing a profound loss to his family, his colleagues, and his community. And whereas a 1993 graduate of McAllen High School, Jose Luis Espiricueta began his career with the San Benito Police Department in 2001. During his time in the force in that city, he earned several accolades, among them the Police Officer of the Year Award in December 2004. He continued to distinguish himself as a member of the Mission Police Department, and his commitment to protecting and serving the public led him to risk his life on numerous occasions. His heroic efforts included rescuing a man from a house fire, saving two children who were trapped in a car, and apprehending multiple armed suspects in a home invasion. He had recently received a meritorious service award after helping an elderly woman escape from a burning home. Along the way, he was proud to represent his profession and department by appearing on the television programs Live PD on A and E and Border Wars on National Geographic. And whereas above all else, Corporal Espiricueta was deeply dedicated to his family, he was blessed to share his life with his high school sweetheart and wife of 21 years, Roberta Espiricueta, and he was devoted father of two children, Brianna and Joaquin. Among family and friends, he was known for his ever-present smile, his sarcastic sense of humor, his loyalty to the Dallas Cowboys, and his talent for cooking barbecue. And whereas through his steadfast commitment to law enforcement, Corporal Espiricueta earned not only the highest esteem of his colleagues and his fellow citizens, but their heartfelt affection as well. And they will forever find inspiration in their memories of this heroic officer. Now therefore, be it resolved, that tribute be paid to the life of Corporal Jose Luis Espiricueta Jr., and that deepest condolences be extended to the members of his family, to include his wife, Roberta Bobby De Leon Espiricueta, to his children, Brianna and Joaquin Espiricueta, to his mother, Santi McAllen Gonzalez, to his dad, Joe Gonzalez, to his father, Jose Luis Espiricueta Senior, to his brothers, Isaac Gonzalez and Danny Gonzalez, and to all others who mourn his passing. Signed on this day by Representative Bobby Guerra, State Representative District 41, and the Honorable Sergio Munoz Jr., State Representative District 36.
I will have you present to the family.
Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Texas Legislature, the state of Texas, I present you this flag all over the Texas Capitol. And I present this to you in honor of the husband. God bless you. And all of them, in one of our places, in all of the people. The chair will recognize Victor De Launy. Do you want to say something on behalf of the family?
Thank you for putting me on the spot, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, on behalf of the Espiricueta Gonzalez and Garcia and De Leon family, we want to thank you and the community at large for your continued support for my sister and hers and Joey's two kids. The amount of support has been beyond generous and overwhelming, and far expands the city limits of Mission, from the entire state and across the nation and beyond. Thank you all for taking your time today to recognize and honor my brother-in-law, and for doing this for his family that so greatly, and very much so appreciates everyone's support, and all the representatives and dignitaries and beyond as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. In continuing the regular meeting agenda item number five, Employee of the Month recognition,
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city recently implemented an Employee of the Month program, and tonight we'll be presenting to you our March and April Employees of the Month. We're going to go ahead and start with the month of March. Our Employee of the Month for March is Maria Picasso. She's an Administrative Assistant for the Mission Historical Museum. I'd like to ask Maria to come up here, please. I'm going to read the nomination that was submitted on behalf of her director. It says, Mrs. Picasso has demonstrated her ability to coordinate tasks, manage projects effectively, and more importantly, in a leadership role, negotiate and resolve differences. She has successfully navigated difficult situations with positive results. On numerous occasions, she has been asked to step into a leadership position in which she has proven herself beyond expectations. More recently, she stepped forward to run the museum during the director's absence. Mrs. Picasso assumed the leadership position with ease and grace. During this time, the museum experienced a loss in personnel in which Mrs. Picasso handled the situation fluidly and effectively. Her ability to maneuver and her knowledge of the needs of the department guided her to make empathetic decisions that in turn have proven to be a positive change. This is one of many examples that can be described. She handled all necessary communications with the board and attended City of Mission meetings and events. To surmise the situation, our museum director was able to focus on what she needed to, knowing that the museum would continue to operate with ease as a result of her ability to assume that role. She is an employee that the Mission Historical Museum is honored to have as part of our family. Congratulations, Maria, on the outstanding performance of your duties. It is loyal, dedicated, hard-working employees like you who keep our city running smoothly and make it a great place to live and work. Thank you for all you do. I'd like to ask Cynthia Gurekul and Robert to come up as well, please.
Mayor and Council, before the picture, Ms. Cynthia would like to say a few words. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the museum staff and board members, we'd like to also extend our gratitude for Ms. Picasso as our longest-standing employee at the Mission Historical Museum. She has seen the growth firsthand of the museum, and I have seen the growth in her in the past few years, and it's my honor to work alongside her. Thank you so much.
Our April Employee of the Month is Carmen Rodriguez. She is our Insurance Claim Specialist in the Risk Management Department. I'd like to ask Carmen to please come up here. Carmen has demonstrated time and again a positive attitude in all that she does. Carmen always manages to maintain a positive attitude even when she has had a difficult day. Oftentimes, she's dealing with irate citizens or firm employees who are less than positive, but she always maintains her composure and provides excellent customer service. Carmen takes pride in her customer service. She always follows up with an employee or citizen who needs something from the Risk Management Department. The Risk Management Department is a two-person department. When the director is out of the office, Carmen handles all tasks that come up. Carmen is able to handle all situations without any direct supervision from the director, which states that it is very comforting to know that he has an employee who can hold the fort down with no problems while he is away. Congratulations. Congratulations, Carmen, on the outstanding performance of your duties. It is loyal, dedicated, hard-working employees like you who keep our city running smoothly and make it a great place to live and work. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Carmen.
I just wanted to say very quickly, as the Risk Management Director, that Carmen's work ethic is second to none. She's always staying afterwards to catch up on paperwork because it's very important to know we are a two-person department, so we have to handle all 600, 700 employees of the city, all the workers' comp claims, everything goes through her desk. So, again, thank you, Carmen. Congratulations.
Ms. Muñoz, will you please stand up? On behalf of the Mayor and the City Council, we want to wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Regular meeting agenda item number six, Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So it is a difficult time to deliver the chamber update because of the tragic event that happened, and may our fallen hero rest in peace today. I received a call from a longstanding chamber member, Lucio Cabasus. She is the owner of Waterford Gardens, and she wishes to challenge other chamber members to do a matching gift of $1,000 that she's willing to give forth. So I'll be working with my press release team to send a message out. Regarding last week, our tourism director and I attended a one-week Tourism College course, which is, which takes place during the summer for one week for three years. What you do is they teach you everything that there is to do, to know about the tourism efforts for a city and everything that entails on it. And at the completion of the year, we'll be certified tourism executives, which is what the best thing that a tourism bureau can have. And so we're on the, we're on a good path right now. I also have with me what I had promised, which is our Tourism Guide for the City of Mission, which we do have our tourism assets like our customs, our traditions, our, you know, the best things to do, the nature, nature and hiking bike trails that we do have here along with places to stay. So I'll be sharing this with y'all, and this is what we'll be sharing with other tourism centers so they can come visit us. And tomorrow, we will be hosting our monthly Tourism and Hospitality Meeting, and it will be held at Mr. Dilbag's newest, latest hotel. He owns the Holiday Inn on Sheraland, so that's his second location. He also owns Sure Stay in Western, Best Western. So he's kindly...
What time?
At 9:30 a.m. So you're welcome to join us if you'd like to. We'd love to have you. So yes, he kindly offered his hotel. Next Thursday, we do have our quarterly Buenos Aires Luncheon, which will be featuring a panel discussion. And of course, we invite everyone to come join us, and we have a special reservation for our City Council and our city. And the July Board Meeting coming up, the Board will be reviewing nominations that were submitted by active members of the community to serve on the Board of Directors. At that time, the ballot will be identified, and we will be sharing it with our membership database. And that's all I have for today, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the chamber? Okay. Again, thank you. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, Departmental Reports. You have them on your, on your computer.
May I move to approve reports as presented?
We have a motion to approve the departmental reports as presented in writing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. Any particular questions for any other departments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Departmental reports are approved. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, Citizens Participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody that's signed up?
No, Mayor, no one signed up.
I didn't sign up because I got here a little late.
Council, Mayor, I'd like an opportunity to talk to the City Council. I do have an agenda item, which is an executive agenda item before the City Council. I want to start off with the fact that for 30 years, I served as the judge for the City of Mission.
Hold on, Mr. Pena.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but in our charter, any citizen is not allowed to address an item on the agenda.
Well, I am a citizen of the City of Mission, and it doesn't, I don't see any exception on your, your agenda. For 30 years, I served as the City Judge for the City of Mission. And although I come before this honorable committee, point the order for me.
You may allow him, Mayor, but he has no obligation and no need or other, he doesn't have any, any right to speak on the item on the agenda at this time at this meeting.
If I allow him to, to speak...
He has three minutes.
Given the three minutes, then we will not be in violation of, of any law or...
Of any law, no.
Okay. I want to make it clear that... The Chair recognizes Mr. Pena.
I want to make it clear that I am a citizen of Mission. I was born and raised in this city. For 30 years, I served as the City Judge for the City of Mission. Eighteen as the Presiding Judge, and 12, 13 as an Associate Judge. Never during the period of time that I ever served as the City Judge had I ever been treated in such a manner as I've been treated now. I've been treated like common dirt swept underneath a rug. All I want from this committee, from this City Council, is for it to follow the law. When I took an oath as a judge, I took an oath to follow the law, and I require the same thing from this particular council. Now, some of these council members I know, you know, they, they practice the politics of political destruction. It's come to that, especially with me. I've sent you two letters, Mayor. First letter that I responded to, your interim city attorney. The second letter, I sent it to you. Never have I received a response from you or from your administration. I don't know why I'm being treated in such a manner, but I expect it from some of the City Council members, but from some, I don't. You know, I had, I don't know, my son is in the, in the, in the, in the room tonight, but he asked me a question. He said to me, "Dad, after serving and sacrificing for 30 years for the City of Mission," he says, "How do you feel about that?" I said, "I'd do it all over again." Because I took an oath to tell the truth, I took an oath to follow the law. I would hope that you and any of you, at the end of your career, whether it's with an institution, or whether it's with a corporation, or whatever it is, for 30 years as I have served this community, hope they don't treat you in such a manner. I want you to follow your policy. I want you to be able to give what every other employee that has served the City of Mission for 30 years has been able to receive. I don't want to be treated any different. I don't want anything more or less. I just want to be treated in the manner and in the fashion that I deserve to be treated. I want to close this chapter of my life, and I want to move on. I want nothing to do with the City of Mission. My time has come and gone. You made a decision not to reappoint me. I accept that. But to treat me in such a manner that you've treated no other citizen or any other employee, it's not right. So I'm asking you tonight, when you take this thing, when you take this matter up in the executive session, I would hope and pray that we could go ahead and conclude this matter, both respecting each other and moving on. And that's all I ask for. If not, I will pursue litigation, and I made that very clear in my letters. So I would hope and pray that this matter can be concluded tonight, and if not, we know what, what follows thereafter. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pena. Any other citizen participation?
We didn't know we were supposed to sign up, but could we say something?
Yes, sir. The Chair recognizes you, as long as you give your name and your address for the record. And you have three minutes.
David King, 1600 East Gastel Circle, Mission Manor. We, the residents of Mission Manor, would like to publicly come forth and commend the City Council, Public Works, Police, Permit, and all other departments for their prompt and professional attention to our safety concerns by adding our speed hump, repairing our sidewalks, and improving our handicap ramps in our community. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens in the audience that would like to address the, the council? Any other citizen would like to address the council? Any other citizen that would like to address the council? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, so I will move to regular agenda item 2.0, the consent agenda item. I want to make it a point that any of the council members that would like to draw out any of the agenda items, you have that option. Just allow, just let me know that you're going to draw out any of the agenda items, and if not, I entertain a motion to, for the consent agenda items to be approved or disapproved.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items. That means 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3 will be approved at this time, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3 are approved. Consent, regular meeting agenda item 3.0, approval and authorization, 3.1, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor Council, item 3.1 is approval of resolution. It would be Resolution 1604, amending Resolution 1556, designating a proxy for the NPO. Mayor Council, this amendment is needed to replace Mr. Bess Martínez with Councilman Alberto Vela, and we're recommending approval for this, this change.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second, and this is open for further discussion. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 1604 is approved.
Thank you.
Regular meeting agenda item 3.2, Mr. Arrevalo.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. 3.2, seeking authorization to solicit for bids for the Boys and Girls Club Athletic League's uniforms, as will be starting in October, from October to June. So staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve the solicitation of bids.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Mr. Arrevalo, you're solicit a bid for the Boys Club.
Thank you, sir.
3.3, Chief Núñez.
Mayor, City Council, item 3.3 is authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement for 911 Public Safety Answering Point Services between the Lower Royal Grande Valley Regional Development Council and the City of Mission. The agreement outlines the responsibilities of both Air Law GBDC and the City of Mission Police Department for the proper functioning of the 911 system in the City of Mission. This agreement is for a period of two years, 91/2019 to 8/31/2021. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
May I move to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.3 is authorized.
Thank you.
3.4, Chief?
Item 3.4 is authorization to amend the surface lease between the City of Mission and the Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc. The purpose of the amended surface lease is to have the City, or the Mission Skeet and Trap Club, release a total of 49.52 acres of land back to the City of Mission from the surface lease approved on November the 14th of 2011. The Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc., would still remain with a total of 51.34 acres of land from the original lease for the purpose of use by the set Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc. The Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc., would, agrees to the set amendment, or the set lease, on the condition that the City of Mission agrees to the proposed improvements to the Mission Skeet and Trap Club, Inc., as outlined in Exhibit 3. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.4. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.4 is authorized, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
3.5, Ms. Muñoz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.5 is the authorization to solicit proposals for stop-loss insurance. Stop-loss insurance is needed for fiscal year 2019, 2020. This insurance will cover all costs exceeding the city's deductible on all claims for medical and prescription services. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit RFPs, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve the authorization to solicit proposals for stop-loss insurance.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. 3.5 is authorized.
Thank you.
3.6, Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.6 is approval of detached budget amendments. And these are in the, this is in the Designative Purpose Fund. It is for revenues of $325,000 and expenditures of the same amount for the Police Department for the 2018 Operation Stone Garden Grant, which was approved by council on June 10th. Items will be used for salaries and benefits, as well as machinery and equipment to purchase three patrol units. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve 3.6. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Anybody, any of the city council members have any questions on the budget amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.6 is, is approved, ma'am.
Thank you.
4.6, unfinished business. 4.1, we're going to leave the 4.1 table, and I'm calling, I'm asking the city manager to set up the workshop for the bridge, and then after the workshop for the bridge, then we can come back and address the, address it if necessary. Thank you. Any problems with the council?
Thank you, Mayor.
5.0, routine of the managers. 5.1, city managers comment?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to ask everyone to continue praying for the Corpus Pericueta's family as they go through this, and we all go through this difficult time. I did also just want to congratulate again the Employees of the Month. That's a, a new program initiative that we're doing to promote our, our employees here. So again, congratulations. We are going to be closed on Thursday in observance of 4th of July holiday, and so I just wanted to let the public know. Another important announcement for the, for all of us and the public is that the City of Mission is now in compliance with the Texas Water Development Board. We did receive notification from Texas Water Development Board, and so the City of Mission is now in compliance with that, and, and we are eligible for funding through the state as well. So wanted to share that.
Congratulations, Mr. Pericueta.
Thank you. And also, of course, as, as everyone knows, it went through a difficult time last week, but in, in honor of that as well, we, we did receive the All-America City Award, which I'm very, very proud of for everyone, you know, it was a, a team effort from, from the beginning of, of putting the application together to picking a delegation to present us at the, at the competition in Denver. And so again, congratulations to everyone, the Mayor and the Council for the leadership that, that you provide to our city, to be able to, be able to run the programs that we currently... able to, be able to run the programs that we currently do and, and that we presented. It was a, a great success for us, considering the, the incidents that we're dealing with, so again, congratulations to everyone. Appreciate everyone that participated in that. We will be honoring the participants on the regular July the 8th meeting for City Council at that time, and so that way everybody can get recognized at that time, so, again, thank you. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. 5.2, Mayor's comment. I would like to let everybody know, know that the Mission Regional Medical Center is celebrating 65 years of caring for our community. Please join us at the Mission Event Center in celebration of the 65 years of caring on Thursday, July the 18th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please RSVP to P. Lopez III at primehealthcare.com if, if you're, if you're attending. 5.3, City Council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Betuela.
Just to congratulate the city for the, getting the award, All-American City, and that's pretty much all I got.
Enjoy the 4th of July holiday, and be safe.
Yes, enjoy the 4th of July, be safe. Thank you. God bless you.
I think I'm gonna take my time to ask Roxanne Lerma and Aida Lerma to please stand. You deserve a round of applause. These individuals are extraordinary employees for our beautiful City of Mission. Without them, they did the, the task of getting us the All-American City, from picking the delegation, to writing the scripts, to getting us all ready and prepared to do what we needed to do in Denver, and keep us focused, because it was very, very tough, but we brought back the win, and so if it wasn't for these wonderful women, we wouldn't be All-American City. So I acknowledge you, and thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other?
Have a safe 4th of July. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion for the executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code, Section 551.001.
We're to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will go into executive session. I will entertain the motion for the executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code, Section 551.001, for reconvene.
I'm going to recommend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. 6.1A, Mr. Martinez, we have no action. We have no action, so I'll call 7.0, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn.